Good evening, everybody. And welcome to a live edition of the School Committee Debate. I'm Mark Snyder along with Jeff Pickett. We have a very interesting format. And of course, this is the last debate, the final debate out of what, 120 debates this year?
Yes.
This is the one that counts. This is the definitive debate. It's live right now on Comcast and Verizon through SMAC. We're going to have two-minute opens and two-minute closes. And Jeff will tell you a little bit more about those when we get going. Each question will be answered in 90 seconds. And there will be 60-second rebuttals. And we'll allow the candidates to rebut until they have done with their points. Christine Yakabuchi will be here as the timekeeper. Christine, thank you. And before the show, we drew cards to get the order of the participants. And the opening will be George Delinsky, Kate Pinokian, Randy Yanoff, Joe Suarez, and Deb Sovini in that order. Closing will be the reverse order. So before we open, Jeff's going to tell you a little bit about the opening question.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, everybody, for joining us. You certainly have gone through your fair share of debates this election season. For this particular opening statement, please explain why you are running for the School Committee and some of your visions and goals if elected next Tuesday.
Again, we'll start with George.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Jeff.
Let's wait for that music to shut off.
Music background. I didn't think I was untalented. I hope you didn't expect me to sing.
That's a little bit of an ambiance.
I'm running for reelection for the School Committee. I have a vast amount of experience working in the town on various committees. I know I make a difference. I'm not afraid to voice my opinion. I'm not afraid to bring up ideas and suggestions. And at the same time, I see a great future for the Stoughton school systems coming down the road. My experience, for those that do not know who I am, include nine years of service to the Finance Committee, nine years of service to the Conservation Commission, nine years of service in the Council on Aging, town meeting rep for about 34 years, involved with the youth via the STOYAC programs. Currently, I'm the Basketball Program Director and have been for the last 14 years. So I've seen a lot. I hope to be around a lot longer to see a lot more. And I appreciate this opportunity to have this open debate and look forward to hearing what the other candidates have to say. Thank you.
Kate?
Hi, I'm Katie Pinokian. And I'm running for the School Committee because I want Stoughton schools to be as desirable as they were 10 years ago when my husband and I chose Stoughton for our children's education. We have four children. Three are at the Gibbons Elementary School right now. My oldest went through Gibbons and O'Donnell Middle School and is currently at Southeast and Regional High School. Having children in the school systems means that I have, I experience the decisions made by School Committee and the administration and how they affect my children's education. I believe that our children need an advocate to make sure that they're receiving what they need and deserve to succeed. No two children learn alike. I believe that schools have, need to have the appropriate resources so that each and every child have the opportunity to succeed. Lastly, I am, I'd like to say that I'm here because I want to make an investment in Stoughton and in the education and future of our children. I am, I help volunteer a lot at the schools. I'm an active member of the PTA. I'm a trainer, a box trainer, which is a program that the YMCA has brought to our community. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Randy?
My name is Randy Yanoff. I grew up in this town. Moved this town 41 years ago. I turned 41 last week. I have two kids that go to the schools in this town. My son is fourth grade in the Gibbons School, the school that I went to. My daughter is in eighth grade at the O'Donnell Middle School, the school I went to. And hopefully, they'll be going through the high school like I went to. I'm running for School Committee because I want to see this town get back to where it was when I was going through the schools. I don't like the illegal activity that's been going on by the School Committee, by the superintendent, and it needs to change. The bullying side of the school systems needs to be fixed. The special education side of the school system needs to get fixed. There's a lot of problems when you have all the schools going down in scores. It just, it needs to get changed. It needs to get fixed and brought up where it was. And people need to be held accountable for what they did. When the school systems are going backwards, then we need a change in the School Committee. We need to make it where it once was. We need to get it back to Stoughton to where it once was. So instead of sitting on the sidelines and complaining to all different people about it, I stepped up and said, "I'm going to go for it now." And hopefully, I get your vote. If I don't get your vote, hopefully, everything I've said and everything that I've said for people will listen, and maybe they'll change it themselves if they realize what's going on in this town. But legal activity that the School Committee is being done, legal activity that the superintendent's being done, nobody's being held accountable for it. It's time someone does hold a lot of people accountable for what they're doing. Thank you.
Joe?
First of all, I'd like to thank Mark Snyder and Jeff Pickett and the SMAC group for allowing us to speak and have this debate. My name is Joe Con-Joseph Sewers. And I've lived in Stoughton for 41 years. I've been married for 47 years. I graduated from Stone Hill College. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in business. I pray and hope, it's going to be hard for you people out there to understand this, but I pray and hope that I can today give you an understanding of who Joe Sewers is and how he thinks and how he reacts. The reason why I'm running for School Committee, excuse me, is because I'm upset with the way the School Committee has abdicated their responsibilities to Dr. Rizzi. And because of that, I need for you to understand that, I apologize for this, but I need you to understand that I believe that there has to be a change. And if you want to change, vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe? Deb?
Deb, my name is Deborah Sovini, and I'm currently on the School Committee and I'm running for reelection. I've spent my entire career in science education, and I have a passion for it. I believe that if our kids are to succeed in what is really a global economy, they need 21st century skills, critical thinking, technological fluency, creativity. They need to be able to compete. In my four years on the board, one of them as committee chair, I have certainly worked hard and have much to show for my work and commitment. I helped to successfully negotiate the implementation of the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation Law in Stoughton schools. Our educators are now setting goals, developing evidence to support them, creating self-assessments, and using data to inform and improve teaching. I work with the administration to revamp our school budget document to create a clear visual presentation that explains our policies and goals and connects spending to student performance. Through visits to PTO meetings, I urged parents to get more involved in town government and am working with our communication specialists to increase communication through our website, through social media, and through my involvement in the Master Plan Focus Group. And finally, leading the community-wide effort that resulted in Stoughton's acceptance into the state funding process for new high schools, the achievement of which I'm most proud. This will bring our town tens of millions for a new or renovated high school. And in the last two years, I have worked with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee to create a cooperative atmosphere between all three boards. And I would certainly like your vote on April 8th.
Thank you. The first question's going to be asked by Jeff. Actually, he's going to ask all of them except the ones the candidates will be asking. But question number one's going to go first to Katie. Jeff?
So one of the main issues, this, not just this election season, this entire school year, has been the school contract situation and the lack of settlement of the contract. It's still ongoing between the administration and the Stoughton Teachers Association. So can you assess this contract process? And what can you do to help get this settled after Election Day?
Well, I believe that the contracts right now would be settled if the, if the steps would just remain the same. I would look at the last, I can't think of it, the last contract that they had, and I would go from there. I would, I would be fair. And it's just all about fair and, you know, cost of living increase. I don't think it's that difficult to look at a contract and be able to make a fair choice that this is what they've been doing for, you know, 40 years. And I don't think they should be getting salaries taken away from them. We still expect these teachers to teach our children, and so we should, they should expect to get paid for it as well.
Randy?
Well, I mean, one is difficult partially to answer this question because we aren't in on the negotiations that have gone on. What I could bring to the table to help it is I haven't negotiated many of contracts in my life, many of leases in my life. So I understand the give and take of a negotiation. It can't be all one way and not back on another way. I would not have, you know, I don't know what tactics were used by either side, but a tactic that, you know, really kind of disagree with is the fact that money being held from the teachers, which are honoring their past contract, and the teachers now are not receiving, they're honoring the contract that was in the past. And yet, whether it's a superintendent's decision or the School Committee's decision, they're not honoring going by at least that old contract. So that's creating more of a contention, you know, between the two. If it's a tactic, it could be a tactic, but now we're going to end up incurring legal fees and all these other fees. And it creates a tension where neither side is now going to agree with each other, and they're going to be that more adversarial. Instead of trying to work together, they won't trust each other at all. So got to build the trust between the two groups again, which might take, you know, this election to do it, and maybe the incumbents leave and new people come in, and hopefully then the contract will get done.
Joe?
First of all, there, there's a couple of changes that want to take place. There is the old step value, and then there's a new step value. And I believe the teachers don't like that new step value. Also, there's also, there's a bigger problem where the teachers do not trust the establishment, do not trust the School Committee or the Dr. Rizzi. They had a poll at one time, and this was in December, where the poll says that 92% of the teachers do not trust either one of them. And because of this trust issue, there's evidently a big problem with the negotiations. Obviously, there's a big problem with the negotiations. So anyway, I believe the union is probably asking somewhere under 3%. And there's also another question of $355,000 that the union is saying that the teachers didn't get. So I believe these are part of the reasons why they're having such a big problem with the negotiations that are taking place now.
Deb?
This is Contract 101. So what's happened is that the union is asking for a 24% increase over three years. Our steps are almost 5%, 4.8%, and they're asking for cost of living increases of 3% a year. This comes out to 24%. The town cannot afford that. About a year ago, more than a year ago, the Board of Selectmen and School Committee looked at the long-term finances of the town. And we looked at the things that, that need to be spent as far as capital projects, and we looked at our operating budgets. We simply cannot afford this. The School Committee represents the taxpayers. And we walk a fine line between, between making sure our teachers are well-paid, and they are, they are paid on the par with teachers in Eastern Sharon, Canton. But we also represent the taxpayers and, as well as the students. And that, in a nutshell, is what the problem is.
George?
Thank you. I am on the negotiating team. And one of the things that concerns me is the fact that A, we do have a good group of teachers in the system, and they're doing a very good job, and the kids are getting an education. B, it is my feeling that the teachers are being led by the MTA representative, who is doing whatever they can to discredit both the School Committee and also giving the teachers bad information. As Deborah said, the step raises plus the cost of living increase that the teachers, the MTA representative is asking for, comes up to be about 24% for almost the bulk of our teachers. Now, you've got to realize, there is a step system in place, meaning that if you start on a school year as a brand-new hire, you start basically on step one. If you last, if you make it through the first year and you come back for your second year, you go on to your second year. That's basically a 4.9 or 5% increase in salary, plus what they're looking for, a cost of living increase on top of that. If you go over the three years, you'll find that you're talking about, like we said earlier, 23.8 to 24%, depending on which step you're looking at. And there is nobody in any business or any union in the town that's getting this type of increase. The taxpayer has to realize that this is going to cost them a lot of money if we go with this situation. Thank you.
Anybody have any rebuttals?
Oh, I mean, Randy? Kind of what, you know, the only thing I really got to say is, I don't have those numbers in place, but kind of like what Chicken Little always said, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling, the sky is falling." If everyone throws out, you know, the comments throw out, "Hey, 24%, 24%," everyone's going to get scared. You know what? If it's true, you know what? I will agree with the School Committee. But you know what? I can throw out numbers, "Hey, look, you know what? Whoa, you know what? There was an 80% increase." You know what? We're not in that room to discuss it. We don't know. And if it's supposed to be private negotiations, why are they throwing out the one number that's scare tactic, but they're not, they're not talking about the other numbers of the stuff that they're doing illegally as far as holding the money from the teachers and not honoring the past contract? That's not being talked about. So why is it, everyone's like, "Oh, what? The sky is falling, you know? It's 24%. It's 24%." Well, okay, then where's the money that the teacher's supposed to have earned, which is now causing the trust to be none?
Anybody have any? Sure.
Dr. Rizzi turned $780,000 to the, to the town. Now, in that $780,000, it was stated that that could not be used for raises or increases or anything else. And that wasn't true. That money, there was about, and supposedly, most of that money was supposed to be for special ed. Now, Dr. Rizzi had said that special ed was money that could, could not be used anywhere else. But all it takes is to bring that money up to the School Committee, and she can have that put into, she could have that money put, I'm sorry, she could have that money put anywhere she wants and any pocket she wants. I'm a School Committee member. I know that when I go to Town Hall, I vote the bottom line on the budget. That means that Dr. Rizzi, that means that Dr. Rizzi can put, can ask the School Committee to put that money in any place that they want.
I, I just want to say that I believe that our teachers are amazing and that they do deserve their fair cost of living increase, bottom line.
We will end up with a 2.5% override if we give the union what the MTA rep is asking for. We simply cannot afford that. And I'm standing, and I'm sitting here and being recorded and telling you that that is what's being asked for. Now, to say that you're not privy to information when you could have made an appointment with the superintendent and asked her any question that you want to is simply not true. We do not have ground rules in, in place so we can talk about the contract and we can talk about the proposals that have been made. The teachers do work hard, and we do want them to be paid fairly, and they are being paid fairly. But when you look at the long-term finances of, of the town, we can only afford so much.
Go ahead, George.
You know, I listened to what's being said. Randy's had the opportunities to work with me, turns it down, never showed up. I have the numbers. I have the contract. It's right here. It's right here. Nice little green book. And the numbers are very easy to see. Step raises, 5.6, 5.8, 6% by step, by step, by step, depending on the degree. Our teachers are paid very fairly. They are comparable. And this is something that amazes me when people say that they're not being paid properly or fairly. They are. Their salaries are very good salaries, and they have an opportunity to earn the money. They also get stipends for various activities they perform after school. They also have been here in many cases for a very long time. We're not having that flux of people leaving. So we are doing right by the teachers. And unfortunately, like every other union in every other town, everybody wants as much as they can get. And at this point, I think it's important to realize that we are not laying off any teachers. We don't want to cut any teachers. And this is a point that we have to discuss, and we will discuss further.
Randy, do you want to talk?
Well, again, like I said, Chicken Little theory. Oh, we go with the raises, we're going to go with Prop 2.5. I mean, it's again, trying to scare it. Like I said, if it is 24%, and George did offer, I'll be honest, George did offer me to come over, and I didn't have, and I did not have a chance to come over. He did offer to do that. But I also called Dr. Rizzi's office and asked for it to meet with her. Got nowhere. I got sent to a, you know, "We'll go see my assistant superintendent." Well, you know what? If I'm going to be on the School Committee, guess what? You're going to meet with me. And, you know, but again, no one has still, they still haven't answered the question of, when we've just been talking about it, where is the money from the contract when the, when the teachers are honoring the old contract? Why isn't the town of Stoughton honoring the old contract? We keep saying it. No one keeps, no one wants to say why the teachers weren't given the increases from, what the old contract was. If they're still honoring the old contract, why is that money being withheld?
I want to ask about specific portions of this contract negotiation process.
This one's going to Randy.
Okay. This is a two-part question. The first part is to talk about the step increases. The STA is saying that the step increases have not been paid out. Is this something that you agree with, agree with the process of not paying out the step increases? Secondly, up until recently, the STA had boycotted volunteer activities. So that means their teachers weren't at volunteer after-school activities, for example. Do you agree with this tactic? Again, that's something that they had in a release, said that they had stopped doing, but for a while had been boycotting. So those two questions, the step increases and the boycotting, if I can just get everybody's take on those, and those two situations.
Randy?
Well, very simple. They were honoring their old contract, which the School Committee did not honor their old contract. I believe they should have been given the step increases. I believe it would have created trust, and I believe the teachers would have then volunteered at those activities. You know?
But do you agree with that?
Do I agree with, do I agree if they didn't? Personally, I think the kids suffered. Do I agree that they did? No. I think both, both parties ended up, you know, drawing that line in the sand. They ended up in a fight over it. And the only people that really suffered were the kids. You know, they're, you know, and that's true, it happened. Everyone drew a line in the sand. The people that suffered, the kids. The people that suffered, are the kids' parents. You know, my, my son's teacher does volunteer his time, though. He stays after school. So there are teachers that didn't exactly follow the, you know, "Oh, I'm not going to volunteer my extra time." Because there are a lot of teachers that still did, okay? They might not have went to the school fairs, a lot of the other stuff that they used to go to, you know, to show the, show the support, which I'm disappointed in. I wish they all did do a lot of that stuff. I wish they did go to a lot of that, that stuff. But I understood where they were coming from, like, well, if the school, you know, school may have started looking bad on the town. Well, the school's not listening to me. We're not getting our money. So they reacted. And it all comes down to the kids. You know, my kids suffered. A lot of the kids have suffered from it. You know, I'm just lucky that some of my kids' teachers that still didn't fully just say, "I'm not doing anything in helping the kids," and they did step up and help the kids.
Joe?
Could you repeat that question again, please?
Sure. The first part is to talk about the step increases, which have not been paid out during this contract negotiation. The second part is to talk about the boycott, which has since been lifted from volunteer activities. Those two parts of the, two side effects of the contract negotiations. I would like to get everybody's take on that.
First of all, I guess that amounts to the $355,000 that the union was talking about. And those were the increases that should have been given out, et cetera. As far as I'm concerned, that $350,000, if what I'm hearing is correct, should definitely be given back to the teachers because that was in the contract. Secondly, as far as the teachers are concerned, where they're not helping the kids or whatever, I know that if the teachers wanted to take or leave five minutes early, Dr. Rizzi put out something that says they had to be docked an hour. So I believe that some of the teachers, because of that, would rather take off the whole day than be docked an hour. Now, some of the teachers I know that they wanted to make sure that they wanted to stay and take care of the kids because the kids were going to go on to the bus. And I heard this from the union rep, that they ended up getting docked an hour because they wanted to do the right thing. Now, I believe the teachers are trying to do the right thing. I know that they love their kids, and I can see the way that they go all out to try to do the right thing to help them. They're, I think the Stoughton teachers are probably one of the best teachers around as far as what they give. I mean, they even give their own money as far as buying papers and pencils and et cetera. And I don't understand that. I don't understand why they have to use their own monies to supply the kids with paper and pencils, et cetera. Am I over? Thank you.
So I separate the teachers from the local Stoughton Teachers Association Union and from the state union because we're actually bargaining with the state union. The teachers are wonderful. I know them. I go into their classrooms. I do programs. I read. So that's not the issue. The, the contract could have been in place and a new contract a year ago. The School Committee has put out four proposals. We've gotten none in return. There is no, what they call an evergreen clause in the old contract, which is no longer in effect, that requires the provisions to continue on after the contract ends. Now, the subject of negotiations is really the step system and changing the steps from 5% to 3%. Taxes can only be raised 2.5%. If we were to put in place the steps, which is the automatic raises that teachers get every year, and the lanes, which they get when they, which is a salary increase they get with more education, it would cost a million dollars for this year. It would also raise, raise the school budget by 3%. Taxes can only be raised 2.5%. Since the, since the steps are the subject of negotiation, that's why the School Committee voted to withhold them.
George?
All right. The contract, like I've said before, this little green book, effective date, September 1, 2010 to August 31, 2013. It's right here, right there. The key is, when I first joined the negotiating team and our first meeting, I said that we were going to get this contract settled by June. This was last February. Because we're reasonable people, and we should be able to negotiate this contract very easily. And what happened is everybody on the, on the other side of the table laughed because they knew this wasn't going to happen. And here we are, more than a year later, and we still don't have it settled. We've made a number of different offices, offers to the MTA and the STA where we came up with some radical proposals, and we came up with some very equitable proposals, all giving the teachers extra money in their contracts. The town cannot afford a cost of living plus a step increase. It's obvious. That's the position that the town has taken, and this is what we're talking about right now. The fact that the teachers can hold the students hostage is something the parents that are here, Katie and Randy, who have seen this, it affects their children. The teachers are the only ones that can hold the kid hostage. They don't want to do something. They're stopping at the They don't want to do something, they're stopping at the exact time to leave. The other thing that came up, and it was mentioned earlier, the docking of the teacher for one hour for every five minutes that they left early, that was something that was presented to one of the schools that was rescinded very quickly afterwards. Nobody lost any money on this. It was some miscommunication from a teacher to the office, and that's what happened at that situation. I'll answer any rebuttals later.
Katie?
The step increase question that was asked, I believe that the teachers deserve the money that was, is due to them. As for the boycott, I believe that hurt the teachers just as much as it hurt the children. I go into the school and I volunteer, and I know that my teachers just adore those children. And for them to have to say, no, they couldn't go to the fair, they got in trouble from their kids. I mean, this is just ridiculous, this contract needs to be settled. I think that they probably laughed at you, George, when you first walked in there because of the fact that you had 39 steps, when it used to be 14. I would laugh at that, too. These teachers have families, these teachers have to, you know, feed their children, too. I think we need to be fair with that, and I think that what's going on is just ridiculous.
Hang on one second, this joke, how does that end up first? Did you want to talk?
Oh, thank you. These steps, now I know that you have the original steps, and now you have this new step, which is probably double amount of steps. And what's gonna happen basically is, people are gonna come to Stoughton for teachers, and they're gonna be getting their pays, and they're gonna get their, it's gonna take a long time before they catch up to the other journeying towns. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna end up being the training, being the training effort for the teachers, and then they're gonna go to another school and make more money. So the step system just doesn't work, and it really isn't that good.
George?
Katie mentioned 39 steps, and she's right. There was a proposal, it was a radical proposal, something that's being instituted in some of the other towns in other parts of the country where the steps, steps have been increased exponentially. And she's not wrong, she's not wrong, that was a proposal. And it was rejected, and if it was rejected, that's fine. But the last point that we brought up, and I worked up every single number, to be able to give the teachers a proper increase over the life of the contract, was also rejected. And it was not 39 steps, and I can understand why that did get rejected. But at the same time, we came out with other proposals with less steps, and also rejected. 39 steps did not come up into play until after, and long into the negotiating sessions that we had. The reason the teachers laughed initially was the fact that they knew we're not settling a contract in June, which we could have done if people were reasonable on the other side of the table.
So, of course, before we started, we did a salary comparison, we did a survey. And with what the school committee has proposed and what the teachers now get, the only schools that make more are Concord, Carlisle, Brookline, Hingham, Medfield. And those are, and those are out of the 27 towns that we surveyed. Now, they're, the only town that I can find that offers step increases as high as ours is Norwood. And there was an article just in the Sunday Globe about the contract that the Norwood School Committee put in place, which is almost identical to what our union is asking. And the result is they had increased sports fees from $150 to $300 with no family cap. They instituted art fees of $75 at elementary schools, $100 at the middle, and $150 at the, at the high school. They also are laying off 20 teachers.
Anybody else have a rebuttal?
Yes, I do. Right now, because of the way the structure is set up, and because of the way the raises are set up, okay, we're gonna become the training capital of Massachusetts for the surrounding towns if we don't do something about this. This is not the right way to go. We've extended the steps so much, that even though the pay at the bottom of the scale may came out, may come out to be equal to the rest of the towns, it's gonna take them so long to get it that the teachers will be leaving Stoughton and going to other towns.
So, Joe, the question I have for you is, what are the other salary increases that other towns are offering that you think that we're gonna be the training capital of the US?
The way our structure is set up, the way the steps are, it's gonna take us so long to get the raises, that the other people in the other towns will be getting the raises faster, and then therefore we will be training people, who will then be moving to other towns so that they can get their raises faster and make more money.
What are the other raises that you think that other towns are offering? Because, because we have 5% of step increases now, we're trying to change that to 3%. So what do other towns offer?
If the other towns keep the 5%, and you're using 3%, then in two years, you're 6% for one person, but you're 10% for the other person.
Here is the problem, is that there are no other towns that offer that. The only town that I could find that came close to us is Norwood. The typical step increases are 1 and 1/2 to 3% currently across the state.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just one thing, I think, I believe, Joe, in some of his statements is referring back to the old 39-step proposal, and that's totally wrong. The longevity, if you take a look at the teachers and how long they've been with our system, if what he was saying was true, which is not, is what's happening, that the teachers are not gonna be here 15, 18, 20, 22, 23 years. We have some very good, dedicated teachers. They've given their time, they've given their service. We are just trying to renegotiate what they're supposed to get. It doesn't mean that we're looking to cut any salaries, we're not taking anything away, we're not becoming a training ground for some other school system. And as Deb said, we have done some surveys, we've looked at the numbers, and we do compare very favorably. And the key to remember is that in our town, the per capita income, the average income is roughly around $69,000 compared to some surrounding towns that are over $100 or $90,000 per capita. We cannot afford to go with these extra-large increases, sorry about that.
Katie, you want to say something? Randy?
Randy? No one's saying the teachers aren't trying hard. No one's saying that we don't have some teachers that, you know, stay for years. But without this contract getting settled, you're gonna have mass exodus of teachers leaving. It will happen, because there's no security for them right now. So it's gotta get settled, it really does. You know, if they're gonna be hard-headed and pick egged about it, I don't know, because I'm not in that negotiating room with them, okay? But it's gotta get settled. Whether the teacher's now gonna come back and say something, maybe the teacher's gonna come back with a proposal, saying this is what we want. If the school committee has given them one, the teachers haven't given one proposal back, guess what? They, why don't they throw a proposal into the ring, and let's talk about that? You know, but something's gotta get done. I mean, I know the teachers work hard, there's teachers in there that I've had, that my kids are now having, you know? So they do stay here for a very long time. They're not just taking off, but without the contract done, I can see mass exodus of people just walking out that door.
Deb, you have your turn.
So I hate to throw you, George, under the bus, but three years ago, when we were running for election, George said, just get the contract done. It's not so easy, it is very hard, it is, sorry, George, it's very hard, it is very contentious. And, and, and believe me, as much as I enjoy being on the school committee, this is absolutely the worst part of, the worst part of the job. Now, we certainly want to get a contract done, a contract will get done, but this isn't a policy that the school committee came up with as, as far as reducing the step increases. This is something that with the Board of Selectment and now with the Finance Committee on board, they understand the long-term finances. And all teachers will, will get a raise, and many substantial.
Okay, I'm gonna, we're gonna go to the next question. The next question actually goes to Joe, and Joe, you are gonna be asking it. We're gonna take a turn here, everybody's gonna ask a question to all the others in the committee, everybody's gonna have a chance to answer it. Joe, you're the first one to ask the question.
And the way we set this up is, Joe, at the end, when everybody's offered their answer, you'll be able to chime in with, you can answer your own question, in effect.
Okay, thank you. My question, do you agree with the way Dr. Rizzi and the school committee spend the budget, preferably in the area of special education?
Deb would answer that first, I'm gonna go around.
Certainly, we have a renowned special ed department. And this has come to me from two different sources. One, a friend whose child is in Canton and who needs, and who has special needs. They actually told her in Canton, go to Stoughton, because they have an excellent special education program. We have a program that has been in place for a really long time, money is well-spent. Now, we did go through a period of five years where we have had five different special ed directors, and, and this is some years ago, things were in chaos. We have an excellent special ed director, money is well-spent. And I will have to say that we have one of the highest special education, high school graduation rates in the state. It's far higher than the state average. Our special education graduation rate is 84%, the state average is 68%.
George?
In regards to the special ed budget, I do believe that it's being spent properly. I think that the efforts that are being made, having the, a director that's been there for a while, and an assistant director that's been there for a while, has made this thing a little bit more stable. And the kids are getting an education. It's constantly thrown out is Dr. Rizzi, Dr. Rizzi, everything is Dr. Rizzi. You know, the question could have been phrased a little bit better, but at the same time, yes. In regards to the special ed budget, it is worked on, we take care of the kids that come in that need the outplacements, we have special ed transportation for these kids, we offered them quite a bit that some of the other towns, like Deborah said also, that don't have as good a program as us. Yes, I do believe that the budget is being spent properly, and it's in the right direction.
Katie?
I'm gonna have to disagree, I don't think that the budget was spent correctly. If you're, there was money given back at the end of the year, which could have been used for special education. And I believe that there's need to use that money for, for the special education, whether it's to get an extra, an aid, or some, some help. I just, I believe that these children deserve more, and I think that that money could have been spent better.
Randy?
We do have a, we have a pretty good special education system inside Stoughton, I will, I will agree with that. As far as the budget and the money, I mean, do I believe there should be a little bit more money towards special education? Yes, I do. Do I believe there should be some more programs added to special education? Absolutely. I think there should be the more people going for testing, because I know people request testing for their kids, and it takes them six, seven months to get tested, which is, you know, way above what it should be. I've talked to many parents that have requested it in writing. And literally, it's, you know, they request in September, the kids are getting tested in June. Well, that's a whole year lost by their child inside the school system. You know, and nothing was done to help their child. So as far as, you know, maybe hiring a couple more people, maybe do the testing, or maybe figure a way to streamline the testing, if things on those lines, things like that should be looked at and tweaked. But as far as, you know, how hard they work to help these kids, help the kids, they do. They work incredibly hard to help the people in the special education. Do I think there should be some more money allocated and some more streamlining? Absolutely.
Joe, any comments on your own question?
Yes. Dr. Rizzi holds money in a special ed account and distributes that money by moving it via the school committee. The chairperson stated that special ed funds, on more than one occasion, could not be transferred but had to stay in special ed. But in reality, those funds were transferred with school committee approval. This questions the truth and transparency of the administration.
I'm gonna allow 30-second rebuttals this time around, 30 seconds, okay?
Ladies first?
One of the, Deb first?
So the money that was returned was end of the year for a variety of contingencies. It was, the largest part of it, but not the only part, was for out-of-district placements. Now, last year, at the Finance Committee and also at town meeting, we, the question was asked, why do we not return money at the end of the year? And this time, because of, because of a variety of contingencies, were not needed, we were lucky enough to be able to return the money to the town.
George?
Yeah, just one other thing, and I'll make it very quick. Yes, money was returned, in my experience being on the Finance Committee years ago, that the question always was, why don't the schools ever return money? Well, the schools did return money, so now we're being blamed for returning, or yelled at for returning money where we didn't return money in the past. Now we do it, now it's no good, because we did return money. And secondly, in the new budget, there are quite a number of positions that are being looked for in the new budget for special ed and remedial help also. So we are addressing that problem directly, thank you.
You and I on the clock, we're gonna go to the next question, and Deb, you're gonna ask the question to everybody else.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's see. The Gibbons School has been criticized by some candidates for being a Level 3 school. Can you define the Gibbons School Level 3 focus status?
George, you're asking, I'll answer it first.
No, I thought you were gonna answer it. Oh, it's me? Can I defer to somebody else at this point? Or does it have to be me?
It has to be you, you're the next person.
All right, there's a difference between the focus group and the total school. The focus group is one segment of the schools. If you take a look at the numbers, there are different groups, and it's broken down by the state very easily into ethnicity and various aspects. And there are certain elements that do fall below the criteria. And based on the state's requirements, if one subset of the school falls below the standards, then you are dropped the level. The whole school definitely is not, but because that one subset, then you have the school being dropped to a Level 3. It's not overall a Level 3.
I understand why you wanted to defer now. Katie?
I love Gibbons School, I think they're great, the teachers there are wonderful. Level 3 for that focus group, it just goes back to the money that was given back. If we use the money towards that focus group, because if it was a focus group that you knew needed extra, extra resources, then the extra resources should have been in for those children to have what they needed to pass the test, or do better on the test.
Randy?
Well, like, as Katie was saying, I was trying to pull something up as I was doing this. I went short on it.
I always go short.
The special education money that was turned was $268,000. So if that focus group was below, why wasn't some of that $268,000 used towards it? Instruction, $207,000 was turned in instruction out of that $780,000. Why wasn't some of that money used to help that focus group? You might have saved a lot of parents from being maybe upset the fact that the school got dropped to a Level 3. Maybe not, maybe you would. But the whole problem is, is that things were still held from those kids then, because they could have transferred the money per school committee. You know, and then those kids would have gotten that better education, and it would never even have happened if you knew that group was in there, that challenge group was in there. Then more focus should have been put in there, and maybe another teacher. Because if you have $207 in instruction, guess what? Well, that's a whole nother teacher, maybe that could have helped bring that education up, and it wouldn't have happened. The fact still remains, because it went to a Level 3 school, focus group or not, it was still illegal activity done, because the parents of the school should have been told about whether it dropped, and explained to all the parents why it dropped, and you would have had a huge outcry of the parents inside that school of why it went down so bad. I went to the school, like I said, when I was one of the top-rated in the state. Now it dropped to a Level 3. Regardless of the reason, we had the resources to change it.
Katie?
Gibbons School was once the best elementary school in Stoughton. Last year, the Gibbons School was demoted to Level 3. The school principal and the superintendent blame this large, I'm sorry, the superintendent, the principal and the superintendent blame this demotion on special education students. This is unacceptable, particularly because last year, a large amount of special education money was unused and returned to the town. I expect more from the school committee and Dr. Rizzi.
So the, there has been some confusion about what the status of the Gibbons is. And I certainly did make a couple of appointments with the Gibbons School principal, as well as the superintendent, so that I could understand it better. The Gibbons School, schools are put into Level 3 either because of the aggregate, which means all the students, or because of a subgroup. And you go onto the Department of Education website, and they call it a focus school, which is, which is completely different from, for instance, what happened several years ago to the, to the West School. Now, as soon as the state released the information, at the same time, the parents were informed. The Gibbons staff digested the data, began to work with the Department of Education, got all the facts... got all the facts, including what areas to focus on and what population at the school was affected. It was all addressed so quickly by the money that the school was now eligible for, that not even, that when a call was made to the Department of Education, they didn't even know the status of, of, of the Gibbons School. So there are, so there's been a top to bottom assessment and, of their meetings every week, both with the special education staff and reviews of all of the programming.
Thirty second rebuttal, Randy?
Well, first place, when you're saying everyone in this, the parents of the Gibbons School were informed, it's not true. Secondly, you're saying when you guys found out about it, which is not true because you found out before the school year started, you guys decided to make it public after the school year started. So parents, which actually should have had the choice to move their child out of the school, could have, which, that information was held illegally from the parents. You guys can say, well, it wasn't in November, it was guys available to you before the end of the, the school year even last year, because we were told by other people from other towns that it would happen and they found out about it during the summer. And it was not told to the parents, which was illegal. Let's get that fact done. It was illegal. You guys held it illegally.
Deb?
So, I don't think you understand the difference. This is not, the, the Gibbons School as an aggregate, as a whole, is doing extremely well. And I think you, Mr. Delinsky, have, have some data about that. So, because it's a focus school, the rules are different. As soon as the information became public, the parents were told. And at that point, they were also informed of, of the top to bottom assessment and programming and, and all the work that was in fact being done.
And how were the parents told?
They were told by email and there was a-
I never got the email.
There was a piece of paper that was also sent to them.
And I never got the letter.
Well, I saw the letter.
I asked Katie, she never got the letter. She's, she's a parent, she never got the letter.
So, you got no notification?
So, are only two parents of the whole town at Gibbons School?
Katie? I, I didn't get an information.
So, how did you find out?
I-
Other parents talking about it in September.
Well, I saw, but, but in, but in November, you, you were given no notification?
No, not at all. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I, I actually saw the letter, so-
And it was never sent to the parents?
It was not illegal.
It is illegal, because how come parents in September knew about it? People found out in September knew about it. You're trying to tell people, wouldn't know if it in November. I never received the email, I never received anything. Katie, a parent inside the Gibbons School, never received the email, never received the letter. You're saying it was done. Again, this goes to the trust between the teachers and the parents. You know, teachers in the school committee, now school committee and the parents. No one can believe what anyone says anymore. It's getting ridiculous. No one can believe what people say.
All right, I'm gonna cut it off there at this point. Go ahead.
Based on this question, the Gibbons School can be level three or three hundred. What are you, as a school committee, going to do about it in terms of, is there a way to increase it back to a level two or a level one school? Or, and this goes for all schools in Stoughton, is there, what can the school committee do to improve the quality of education given to the students in the Stoughton public schools? Whether the school right now is a level three or-
Three thousand.
Right, that, right. So, what, what can the school committee do?
Just for this, we're-
Just real quick.
One minute limit on both of them. We'll start with Deb and go around.
Okay. So, there's a school improvement plan in place at, at the Gibbons. Programs like Walk to Read and, and a Walk to Math are being reviewed. There's reading support, including systematic phonics developed with teachers and service providers. And there is a district improvement plan, which includes after-school remediation, after-school enrichment and writing toolkits that are, that are at the middle school and in high school and will soon be in the elementary school grades.
George?
Yes. At any school, really, there are improvement plans in all the schools. We do have a staff that is reviewing the data, so we know where to focus the efforts on. Everybody's being made aware of internally as to where the focus has to be and what students need help and where they need help. Whether it's remedial work, either before or after school, the stuff is being worked on. We do have a good administration. We do have some information as to where. We are a little bit behind somewhat and we are addressing the situation and it's being handled properly. And hopefully that the school will return to where it's supposed to be in time. We do have the information available and we are assessing that information.
Katie?
Yes, I do believe that the Gibbons School is definitely gonna improve. They have the best teachers out there and the teachers have been going early in helping. I know my kids have been dropped off. The teachers there are amazing, so let's get that contract settled so that they can stay there.
Randy?
Well, I mean, we need to take a look at that school, in and out. We need to either bring in, make it smaller class sizes, we need to figure out what is going on, the reason why, you know, these kids are struggling in certain areas, you know, whether it's getting more people in that focus group to bring that grade, that grade up. There's gotta be things that, that can be done inside that school. You know, they talk about Walk to Read, yeah, Walk to Read was there. I mean, when I was there, and I don't know what the symbol, they used to, used to walk, actually for math, used to walk for, for reading, okay? They don't walk for math. Okay? They, you talk about Walk to Math, but they don't walk to math inside the Gibbons School. They need to find out who's the strongest in math and they should put them, separate them in different groups. So that, you know, the people that are doing better, maybe excel. People that are doing worse, guess what? They get to excel because you get, you have a teacher maybe with an extra aide inside that room. You know, they need to start taking a look at what, what made that school as good as it was and get it back to where it was. Because it's not there. You can see it. You can see it as parents, you can see it for kids. You can see the, the frustration in the teachers.
Joe?
Basically, if I'm saying it correctly, they have a problem in the schools with the way they deal this problem. It's generally someone who is, even though they're in a fifth grade, they're like a second grade student. But they're taking yet a fifth grade test, okay? And it's very, very difficult to do that. Now, the school needs to work with these kids and get them ready. Every school is judged the same way. We have to find the combination to make them work. This is a combination of where Dr. Rizzi and the principal of the Gibbons School needs to work with these kids and they need to find the combination that is gonna unlock and get that child excelled to be able to take this test. Now, I'm not gonna be able to do it. That's their job to do it. And is my time over? I'm sorry.
Five seconds.
Five seconds. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna skip our rebuttals on this because we wanna get to everybody's questions. George, you're next to ask everybody the question.
One of the candidates and his mentor has said, it's been said that there is unscrupulous hiring practices going on. Please explain what you mean by that statement and give examples.
Katie, you'd be the first one to ask.
Oh. I'm thinking maybe the communications specialist, that was one of the school committee meetings that I went to. And I believe that, that hiring could have not taken place. I believe that somebody to create a Facebook page would have been better for a high school student or, and I think that high school students would have enjoyed something like that and taken a lot of pride for it. So I believe that the money spent on that particular person could have been saved and used towards something that's needed in the school.
Randy?
Well, I know that we had a question directed toward, I know it's not me, but I'll try to answer this anyways. Well, I believe it was kinda where the, you know, where some of the people in the school committee were meeting before, talking about certain candidates when they weren't supposed to be doing that. And that, from what I've heard, you know, again, this isn't talking to me, that Dr. Rizzi was handpicking her people and putting them in and the whole process wasn't really gone through. That's what I've heard. Again, I know where this question is directed towards and I know it's not me. But again, I, so I'm not even a hundred percent sure where this was going, except I kinda do now.
Joe? Joe?
Well, everything Randy said, I basically agree with. I know that there's something going around that says that Dr. Rizzi is hiring a lot of people from Hull. I don't know if that's true or not. I do know that the assistant superintendent is from Hull. I do know that if the school, and I know there's a problem between the school committee hiring and, and Dr. Rizzi hiring. Apparently, it seems that Dr. Rizzi seems to do all of the hiring and for some reason, not allowing all of the school committee to see the resumes or whatever the case is. Okay? This is part of a transparency problem. That's basically, that's basically all I know.
So, here's the problem is, is that what the three challenging candidates have done is to repeat hearsay, blog gossip and in some cases outright lies. There are not unscrupulous practices going on at the, at the height, at, at any of the schools. Certainly no place in the school system. Both Mr. Delinsky and I have been part of teams of people that have interviewed candidates and have reviewed resumes. Everything is done according to state law and hiring policies. So, we have, we hire the best people and it doesn't matter whether, whether they come from Hull, whether they come from Hingham, whether they come from Stoughton. We hire, we hire the best people. And, and as far as the assistant superintendent, I mean, he's just a gem. He understands so much about curricula and all of our policies. He was a, a great hire. And that was a school committee hire.
George, you can comment on your own question.
Yeah, just to clarify what goes on, there are, as Deborah said, a number of committees that were instituted to hire some of these positions. The business manager, there was, I believe, six or seven people, myself included, who interviewed a number of candidates for that position. The middle school principal, there must have been ten or eleven people that were part of the committee to interview the middle school principal. The communications specialist, that was a number of people also that possibly got together as a committee. When I was on the committee to review the, the business manager, we made recommendations. We didn't do any hiring. We made recommendations of the top people that we thought out of all the applicants that were best qualified for the job and allowed the superintendent pursue the in-depth interview of references and everything else before we made the hire. To single out one individual town is ludicrous. I mean, we have fifty-some-odd teachers, I believe, in the school, and they work in Stoughton. Aren't we supposed to let them go based on where they live? To bring up a town in particular, I mean, you gotta be really sinking low for that.
We're gonna go right to the, there's no rebuttal on this because we, we have two more people who asked us questions and we have very limited time. So Katie, your turn to ask a question to everybody.
Okay. Stoughton teachers have signed petitions. Stoughton teachers have protested school committee meetings. Stoughton teachers have held rallies. Do you believe that the current school committee is looking out for our teachers and in conjunction its students' best interest in what would you do in office to ensure the needs of all be, of all are being met?
Randy, if you repeat it one more time. You, you asked four different parts of the question.
I was just saying that the Stoughton teachers have signed petitions, they've protested and they've held rallies. Do you believe the current school committee is looking out for our teachers and in conjunction to its students' best interest in what would you do in office to ensure the needs?
Well, do I believe that the school, current school committee is looking out for our kids' best interest? I believe they always are. I'm not gonna say they're not looking about the kids. Do I believe that they're looking out for the teachers' best interest? No, they're probably not. They're, but they're probably looking at the whole townwide best interest, not just on the teacher's best interest. I'm probably correct at saying that. Do I believe now conjunction as it has caused hurt to the kids? Absolutely. Do I believe that things could have been done differently? Absolutely. If I was on the negotiating team, could, could I have, you know, got this contract negotiated and done? I will not say absolutely because I wasn't in that room. Would I have loved to believe I could have done it? Absolutely. I think all of us would love to believe that we could have gotten it done and already settled. And I'm sure George and Deb want this done and settled because this wouldn't have been a topic, you know, gotten so debated, so, so highly debated at this time. You know, I mean, do I believe that everyone wants the best interests for this town? I do. I do believe everyone wants the best interests for this town. Has it worked out that way? No. Has it caused a great, you know, arguments between everyone? Absolutely. Would I have done things a lot differently? I would have. There would have been a bunch of things I would have done differently. I would have not have made it public. I would have tried to, you know, meet with the teachers. I would have let the teachers speak, you know, at the school committees and not try to shut their mouth up.
Joe?
Got you.
Well, you know, it's interesting because that three-minute talk, I was also told not to speak at that meeting. And it was amazing because here I am, I pay my taxes in Stoughton, but yet, but yet, I was not allowed to talk because for some reason, Joyce Hussey wanted to be my mother. For some reason, she felt that I couldn't do the right thing when I came to that three-minute talk, that I would use it because I wanted to run for school committee. And I think that's amazing to me. Where was she when I was doing all of my, my life decisions? But anyway, the, the teachers, I believe, they certainly have a lack of trust. I'm gonna go back to the survey again. And the survey stated that they have no trust in the school committee and they have no trust in Dr. Rizzi.
It's the second one.
So if they have no trust in that, then they obviously aren't really gonna negotiate or they're not gonna trust who they're negotiating with. I also believe that the step system is not to their liking and I also believe that we will become the trainers of teachers and after they reach a certain length, a certain, certain step in our money value, and it's, it's gonna be slower, that they're gonna be moving off to other towns and getting a better, getting jobs so that their rates will be a little bit higher than the rates of Stoughton and they'll make more money as time goes on.
Deb?
So, trust me, George, Ms. Hussey does not want to be your mother.
That's Joe. All right, that's Joe.
She's looking forward to an empty nest in a couple of years. As for the teacher's contract, we certainly have offered very, very good deals, including a thirteen percent increase in, in the starting salary for, for a new teacher, a ten percent increase in the starting salary for a, for a teacher's beginning at the master's level and a one percent increase for, for all the teachers at the top step. That's, that's one of several proposals. All teachers will get salary increases. And I, I think that's, that's all I have to say.
You know, based, my turn to answer, right? All right, based on the question, I, I saw the signed petitions. I saw the postcards that came to my house, it must have been over a hundred of them, looking for a settlement of a contract. And I happen to agree that we should settle the contract. I sat down and I worked out by hand a proposal that gave every teacher from step one to step thirteen or fourteen, an, a nice increase over the years. Unfortunately, it didn't work, okay? And what's happened is that we had a starting salary for a teacher at forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which the MTA said was too low.
We agreed.
Okay. So what happened is that we did a, an adjustment on one of the proposals that we made and adjusted the beginning salary up to about forty-five thousand and change. And that was rejected. So when I finally asked the, the MTA representative, let me see your proposal as to what you wanna see, they went back to the beginning salary again. So they didn't particularly take into consideration what they were asking for, they went back to the original thing. I want the contract settled. Our teachers are excellent, but at the same time, they're being driven by somebody who's either getting a commission on the havoc that she wrecks or it's, our teachers are being babboozled by this one representative. And unfortunately, the kids are the ones that suffer and I'm sorry about that. But it's the MTA representative that's causing the grief, not our teachers.
Katie, your last, on your question.
I believe the current school committee has not had the best interest of the teachers in mind. And because of that, I believe our children are the ones who are affected. How can we put our students first if we're putting our children, how can we put our students first if we're putting our teachers last? If I were in office, I would make the lines of communication between everyone open. I believe a positive relationship is needed so that we all can move forward.[1760.01]
Okay. Randy, it's your turn to ask the questions. And this one over here, because we're running out of time, we're going to go 60 seconds on the answers to this, okay?
All right, no problem. Obviously, the lines of communication between the school committee and the teacher association and Dr. Rizzi, well, school committee and Dr. Rizzi and the teacher association are now, there's no trust. There's nothing there. What do you think you could do to now try to reestablish it and, you know, bring it back together again?
Well, as far as negotiations are concerned, I think what they should do is eliminate that second step contract, which the teachers don't want. They should go back to the normal steps that they had before. The other thing is, I doubt very much if you can even bridge the fact that the school, that the teachers do not trust the school committee and Dr. Rizzi. I think there's been too much that's happening and I don't think it's repairable anymore.
Yep.
So, I, I find it ironic, if not actually hypocritical, to say that you think that the teachers should, that the union should receive what they're asking for as, as far as the raises. Because every year, Mr. Soares, I've heard you stand up at town meeting and want to cut the school budget. And, and right now, if we implement what they're asking for, it would raise the school budget by 3%. What I would like to see is, is the STA president, the Stoughton Teachers Association, the union president, meet every week with, with Dr. Rizzi. I know that Dr. Rizzi has requested meetings with the union president and I think that that would go a long way to open the lines of communication if they could have a once-a-week meeting, every week.
George?
You know, I think that we do have some decent cooperation between the teachers' union and the superintendent. We've had it in the past. There may be a little friction right now between the current president and the superintendent, but somewhere along the line, there will be a meeting of the minds. The teachers will get an increase. I know that for a fact. And at the same time, I just want to avoid what's happening allegedly in Norwood where we would have to fund or cut 20-some-odd teachers to fund a contract. That's not what we want to do. It's years ago, and I mean many years ago because I'm the oldest person around here and I do remember going back a ways, that the union president at one point said, "We don't care how many teachers lose their jobs as long as the rest get a raise." That, the overall effect is criminal because what happens, you increase the size of your classrooms. The kids don't benefit by that. It's, as in, oh, we have to cut off at this point. Sorry.
Okay. I, I just think there needs to be more communication and transparency between the school committee, the superintendent, and the teachers. I believe if you start opening that up, that you will have a, a better school system.
Randy?
Well, first of all, if I'd have a meeting, put everyone in the same room and let us all hash it out. Let it, you know, close room, let everyone hash it out. Let everyone throw everything they have on the table and let it go. Don't take it personally, but let it all out because you know what? You're not going to get any trust anywhere if you don't start letting it all out and you're letting it build up and, you know, parents trying to get, you know, teachers trying to get parents on their side and then, you know, school committee and Dr. Rizzi trying to get other people on their side and then it just turns into a big cluster that everyone's fighting in this town. Instead of the people, main people involved in this, got to get in a room together, get it all done, get everything settled, throw everything on the table and work it out. You know, it's worked in the past, you know? How this country was built was people getting together and talking about and hashing it all out. But yet, it seems like we can't get everyone together now and hash this all out. It's got to get done. You got to be able to try to build that trust up. You got to get everyone, be able, don't take personally and just let it go.
All right. We're not going to do rebuttals on that.
Can we, can we do a little negotiation since that's been a topic of this debate a lot? Can we cut back maybe some of the time allotted for closing statements so we can get one more question in?
Sure, let's do no closing statements.
Let's do one-minute closing statements.
15 seconds.
And we'll do a quick, uh, quick final question. If that's all, is that all right with you guys?
Sure, sure.
Well, it's going to be hard for me to cut it down to a minute, but, you know.
Well, I agree, yeah.
This one goes to, to Katie, actually. And you can, uh, you can start it.
Okay. The final question from, from us before your closing statements is--
You should go to Joe, actually.
Okay, well, I get to Joe then.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for keeping track, Randy.
One answer second.
So, this debate's being filmed Monday, March 31st. Tuesday, April 1st, the school committee will evaluate the performance of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Rizzi. Can you briefly give an evaluation of her performance citing strengths and weaknesses? Uh, and again, maybe take about a minute.
One minute. I'm not sure. All right, I got a minute. One of Dr. Rizzi's strengths, my God, is very, very easy. She literally controls the school committee. You can see that every place. All you have to do is go and watch the school committee and you can see that. All right? So now you want me to work on her weaknesses? I can only work on her strengths because I've seen that, as a matter of fact, I call it, what makes Dr. Rizzi so strengthful with the school committee? I call it the magic of Dr. Rizzi. It's unbelievable how she can manipulate, and I, and I'll tell you another thing too. If you just watch Joyce Hussey, when Dr. Rizzi wants to talk, she gets to talk immediately. Okay? I can see four out of five members, no matter what Dr. Rizzi wants, 15 seconds, no matter what Dr. Rizzi wants, she gets. Thank you.
Magic's dead now.
So, I, I think it's terrifically not helpful for the town and for the schools to take personal attacks on anyone, whether it's principals, whether it's the administration, or whether it's school committee members. As far as Dr. Rizzi, one of her strengths is a budget transparency, which has been noted by the finance committee, including the finance education subcommittee. There are innovative programming that allows differentiated instruction, which means instruction at different levels that she instituted, including walk to read and, and move to math. And there is the Quincy College program, which allows students as a younger sophomore year to take college-level classes that can then qualify for, for their college career and therefore save them a lot of money because they can graduate early. And that program has now been extended to the Stoughton Academy.
George?
Can I just ask you to repeat this because the answer's gone a little bit astray?
Sure. The question is that tomorrow, the school committee, or when we're taping this, tomorrow, April 1st, the school committee will evaluate Dr. Rizzi's performance and for you to give a brief evaluation citing strengths and weaknesses.
One minute.
Very easy. Just to bela, not to dwell on some comments that were made by an earlier speaker. Dr. Rizzi is a very committed director. She has stood her ground. She has accepted the responsibility of a superintendent and she's done a very good job. She's hired the right people and put people in their right positions. Business manager is the right fit right now, came from a much larger system, and she's a fairly decent judge of talent. Weaknesses, I don't see many. There's one thing that I brought up when I first got onto the committee that we didn't do enough of and that's publicizing our strengths of the schools, our accomplishments. These are things that are getting improved on and with the hiring of the new communications person, which is a part-time position that was put into the budget last year, we are going to be addressing that more favorably and you'll see a marked improvement. The statement, son of a gun.
I believe the superintendent's strength is that program, the walk to read. That's a wonderful program and I wish that, I know Deborah has said that there is a walk to math. I personally have not seen that yet, but I hope that it does come.
It's in some grades at the Gibbons, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. But my children haven't used that yet. And as a parent, I would like to see Dr. Rizzi at more family functions, you know, extra curriculum, the school fairs. I know she can't do all of them, but you know, as a superintendent, it would be nice for her to come and talk to the parents on a more social, more social event. So if she could work on that, that's something I would address. I do think that transparency with her could be worked on as well. And like I said, the communication is with going to more family functions.
Randy?
Well, I really feel like to do a true evaluation, I really would have to work with her for a while before I could say that this is her strength, this is her weaknesses. If I was trying to attribute walk to read to her or walk to math, I was doing it when I went to the Gibbons school, so how can they say tribute this to the superintendent when we were switching for math and switching for reading classes? So how can we say that's the superintendent's idea? I don't know. I did it when I was at Gibbons school. I don't think she was a superintendent then. So I mean, I can't, you know, say, has she done a great job? I don't know. Do I, has she basically have four, four votes every time she has something to do on the school committee without any question? I believe she does. Do I believe that an evaluation of her should have been done with all the school committee members? I believe it should have been done that way, not try to exclude one. Do I think she's strong-willed? She is a very strong-willed person, which makes her very good at what she does, at, at her job. Her weaknesses? She needs to get out there and talk to people and communicate better. She does not do that enough at all and she needs to talk to the parents more.
Okay. Before we go into closings, just wanted to quickly say again, thank you to Christine Jacabucci for doing the timekeeping and want to thank SMAC for allowing me in the door. I haven't been here for a long time. I know there's guards out here ready to take me out.
Nine o'clock, Mark, you're out of here.
I know. They told me that I have a limit and they're taking me out the door.
I also want to thank Michael Hammond, who's running the control room right now, Dave Young, who's behind, uh, running the cameras, and Tom Lanson, who helped set up the studio for us on a pretty short timeframe.
Each, each candidate's going to have a minute to answer the question and you wanted to give them a little guideline in the closing.
Sure. Just to kind of guide your closing statements, is a last chance to be able to look into the camera and speak to the voters before Tuesday, April 8th. Why should the citizens of Stoughton cast one of their two votes for you?
George, we start with you and we go around backwards.
Very good. First off, I'd like to acknowledge--
I'm sorry. Deb, we start with you.
Yes, okay.
I said, finish your sentence.
We start with you and we go backwards.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Jeff, for organizing this. It's been a wonderful debate. I know the school committee has taken some heat for the ongoing contract negotiations. These are always difficult and time-consuming. A year ago, the town as a whole, both elected boards working together, board selectmen and the school committee, began a process of making salary increases more predictable for financial planning. It is the school committee's responsibility to deliver the best education possible with the funds provided by town meeting. I will work for a fair contract for our outstanding teachers and one that is financially sound for the voters and taxpayers of, of Stoughton. The, the area which I am most proud is that I have worked relentlessly to get us funding for a new high school and we are now eligible for tens of millions of dollars, thank to, thanks to the community-wide effort and of the work of our state delegation. I want to continue on and I ask you for your vote. Thank you.
Joe?
Joe? We need a school committee who will properly supervise a superintendent and keep her accountable. We need a school committee who will conduct an honest evaluation of the superintendent. We pay the superintendent a huge salary and in return, she must reverse the recent demotion of Gibbons School to Level 3, improve the West School, improve special education, improve student achievement in all Stoughton schools, improve communication with parents and avoid conflicts with teachers. I will passionately work towards improving the quality of education in Stoughton schools. I will passionately advocate for curing the unacceptable conditions in Stoughton High School and the South School. I will diligently work to ensure all monies generously allocated by the town meeting are spent in the best interest of Stoughton children. Stoughton should demand fiscal responsibility, accountability, transparency, and common sense. Please vote, please vote on April 8th and consider casting one of your votes for me. Joe and Soares. I will work to make a difference in our school's education. Thank you.
Randy?
My name is Randy Anoff. On April 8th, I want your vote. It's very simple, I need your vote. I grew up in this town, I love this town, my kids go to school in this town. I will help get this, the contract negotiations done. I will hold Dr. Rizzi responsible for everything she does and I will make sure the whole, the school committee does not blindly just follow whatever Dr. Rizzi does and Dr. Rizzi says. I will make sure that the education in this town goes back to where it once was. I will make sure that, it will help make sure that, that the high school does get built because when I went there, it needed to get done and, you know, 20-something years later, it still needs to get done. I ask for your vote, you know, while you guys know me in this town and hopefully you do know how hard I will work for this town to get this town exactly where it should be again.
Katie?
Thank you very much for having me and I am so happy that it's our last debate. I would greatly appreciate your vote on April 8th. I will work hard for our children. I'll work hard to settle this con, this teacher's contract so that we can move forward to gain stability in our schools. Doing this will help receive qual, help children receive quality education without political agendas. I want what every parent in this town wants. I want what's best for our children. I'm a mother who will do nothing more but get the best for our children.
George, you have the final word.
The final word comes down to me, the last word. After how many debates that we've gone through. First off, I'd like to thank Jeff, Mark for running this thing. I think it was quite interesting. It was contentious at times, but at the same time, we were able to voice our opinions. I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates and thank them for running. It's high time. We had people that were concerned, sometimes a little bit misinformed, but at the same time, I do appreciate the fact that they are running. Based on my experience in service to the town and the community and our kids, I feel that I'm the most qualified candidate for the position and ask for your vote on April 8th. And I thank you all for watching and Mark and Jeff, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to say what I always say at the end of every debate. I've been doing them for over a decade here. I'll tell you, first of all, make sure you vote on April 8th. You have no excuse and no complaints if you don't. And in fact, if you are doing something that day, if you're working, if you're away, you can do an absentee ballot at the, at the town clerk's office. The other thing is, if you don't vote, you are not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. Just remember that. Jeff?
Thank you, Mark, and again, thank you for all the candidates for joining us. We thank you for tuning in and make sure that you tune into our selectmen's debate, which will be coming up at 7:45. Again, if you're watching live, if you're watching on replay, ignore what I just said.
And on election night, watch Jeff. He's going to have the results at 8:30.
That is true. Starting at 8:30 on election night, Tuesday, April 8th, live from the town hall. Please tune in and watch as the election results come in and we will broadcast live the winners of the selectmen's race and the school committee race. And the other races have already, they're unopposed. So the two contested races in town, you will find out your results. You can watch on Comcast 9 or Verizon 28 and again, that's 8:30, Tuesday, April 8th.
And I have a feeling some of the candidates will be roving through to see you.
If they're at town hall, we welcome all of you to stop by and win or lose and come on and chat about the future of this town. Thank you again for joining us.
The future looks bright because there's some great people running and it's really nice to see people getting off their chairs and instead of just complaining, going out and actually running for their office.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, everybody. We'll see you on April 8th.